Good afternoon. I'm Jenny Beth Martin with Tea Party Patriots Action. Thank you so much for joining this video about the National School Board Association. You probably recently heard about this organization and it may have been the very first time you've heard of it. At Tea Party Patriots Action, we did a how-to guide for parents to be involved in their school boards. And we released this how-to guide at the end of June and we addressed the National School Board Association in that how-to guide. So we're going to give you a little background information, then we're going to go through this portion of our how-to guide so that you can learn more about the organization and then learn ways that you can make a difference regarding this organization and how it may be interacting with your state and local school board. So let's go through just very briefly background information about the National School Board Association and why you might care about this right now. This is an organization, it's a national group with school board districts from around the country who are members of the school board, I mean of this association. They may be members of it through their state school board association and the state pays dues to the National School Board Association, or they may be part of it directly. But they, it is comprised of people who are on school boards around the country. And oftentimes you have elected, the school board members are elected. So it's people who you have elected to represent you who wind up being a member of this organization. And they're a member of it as somebody who was elected to be a school board member or appointed as the case may be depending on how it is in your school district. This organization sent a letter to the Department of Justice saying that they thought parents needed to be investigated because the parents were showing up at school board meetings. And they wanted something done about this and about potential violence that parents may be bringing. They were only able to cite in their letter, I believe, one instance of violence around the country. And they were not able to give it's a lot of comments about where these problems were happening around the entire country. Nevertheless, because of an incident they had and because parents are showing up and they're making their voices heard at school board meetings, they've alerted the Department of Justice to this and the Justice Department has in turn sent a memo out and essentially said that parents who are showing up at school board meetings and are being loud at these school board meetings may be classified as domestic terrorists. That's right, domestic terrorists. So I don't know about you, but I think that when I go to peacefully exercise my First Amendment rights at a school board meeting where there is public comment allowed, I am allowed to speak at that meeting and I have the right to speak at that meeting. And I might actually be a little bit loud as I express myself. But being loud does not mean you're being violent. It just means you're being loud and you're expressing yourself. And that's what the First Amendment is about. So we want to make sure that you know more about this organization and that you know how to begin getting answers from your own school board about how they may have, whether deliberately or inadvertently, triggered the National School Board Association to write to the Department of Justice who then in turn labeled you as a domestic terrorist. And with that, we're going to go to Kelly Karinder. Kelly is a member of our support team. She's been with Tea Party Patriots for the better part of the entire Tea Party movement. And she is a mom of school age children and of a young infant in Idaho. So now we are going to Kelly Karinder.
Thank you so much, Jenny Beth. I'm excited to go through all of this information with everybody watching because it is super important for all of us to understand who we are dealing with when it comes to the National School Board Association. And please, when you're done watching this, please share it with other people. Anybody you know, not just in your local school district, you have friends across the country, family, share it with them after you are done with this. So we'll go ahead and dive right in. The first thing that I want to highlight for you is how to get this guide. So the section we are talking about is within the full guide. And so you're going to want to download the full guide. And so you go to schoolboardmeeting.org. You scroll down, there's a button and it'll say something like click to access guy, the how-to guide. And you want the one that's for the school board meeting and it's got a little logo with a school bus on it. So it's very clear which one it is. You enter your email address and click continue. And then it will give you the option to download the guide. And so then you can save it to your computer and you'll have it. It'll be yours to use. You can, you know, you can print it out, you can share it with people, all that sort of stuff. After you download it, you, this is what it's going to look like. So you can see that bus logo right there. That's what you're going to be looking for to know which guide. It also says school board guide, so you'll be able to tell which one it is. That's what it's going to look like when you download it, like a big document. Okay, so for the section that we're talking about, you're going to go to page 22. I just want to note real quick that it is the National School Board, School Boards Association that is the one that even came up with the idea of calling parents domestic terrorists. The parents who dare to go to school board meetings outraged about what's happening to their children in school. They are the ones in their letter, they actually suggested it. They said, "We recommend that you," you know, to the DOJ, to the Attorney General of the United States, "we recommend that you classify and look into these people as domestic terrorists." So, uh, which is crazy because they also at the same time say they represent you. This organization says they represent you. And so they represent you, but they also think that you're a domestic terrorist and your taxes go to pay for it. So anyways, we'll get into all that, but I just wanted to highlight that part of how insane this all is. So this is what the page looks like, page 22. This is the first page that you'll get to for this section. Okay, so there are so many associations and councils that most of us have no idea exist. I mean, it is a Hydra, it is a spider web, it is like prairie dog tunnels that are all connected. And you go down one and then it connects you to three more and then those connect to three more. And it's this way, if you start looking into medical boards and associations, you know, professional, other professional organizations. And, excuse me, it is, it's just crazy how many there are and how influential they are. And yet you and I and most of us have no idea, we never had any idea that they existed or what they were doing under the surface, right? They claim to speak for you. This organization, like I said, claims to speak for you. And they are very likely more influential than you and your fellow parents or and other concerned citizens. In our research, what it really appears to be is that they are lobbying organizations and they lobby for exclusively left-wing policies. They require dues. So we went through the NSBA's bylaws. They require dues from all of the members who are all of the school board, the elected school board officials who make up the membership of the NSBA have to pay dues to be members. So I highly doubt that the school board members are just paying out of their own pocket to be a member of this organization. It's very obviously something that the school board pays for them with tax dollars. So now it could be a small amount, it could be a large amount, we don't know. That's something you're going to need to figure out and we'll get to that, we'll get to that discussion a little bit later. But we do need to know how much are we paying for them to be members of this very left-wing organization that lobbies for very left-wing policies that supposedly represent us? Okay. So the way it goes is you've got your local school board, then you have regional school board associations. Then those feed into the state school board association. And those state school board associations are what feed into the national association. There are, it is, what's crazy is you will see when you start looking into this in your, your area, your state is that they, many of them, I can't, I can't vouch for all 50 state associations. So we didn't have time to look at all 50 of them. But the ones we looked at, as well as the national one, they are very open about their advocacy for all the things that parents are showing up to meetings to fight against, which is why they want to call you a domestic terrorist. They are all in on critical race theory. They are all in on other critical theory, you know, ideas like queer theory and, you know, any of the other ones that, that they're pushing in left-wing academia. These school boards associations are, they're all over it. They receive funding from large corporations and which are very woke, the woke corporations. And they're pushing, and from the companies that push Black Lives Matters and push the girls, the boys playing in girls' sports and all of that line of left-wing ideology. They're getting money from these companies who push these things. And they also in their, in all of the stuff that you're going to research and you'll see, they fully support all that too, the association. They also list their partners, which are left-wing nonprofits. So we have in the guide, you'll see there's a paragraph that just caught, we copy and pasted from them of who their left-wing or who their nonprofit partners are. Well, off the top of my head, I can tell you, one of them is the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, which we all know is totally not corrupt at all, sarcasm. They are, and they're very left-wing and they do a lot of very left-wing things across the world. Another one is the Aspen Institute, which you may or may not have heard of, but they are super hardcore radical left-wing. So they're, and you can go through the list and, and just look them up, each one up. And you'll see, that's not a conservative organization, that's not even a middle-of-the-road center organization. They're all left-wing organizations. That's who they work with exclusively. They don't list anybody conservative or anybody, you know, in the center. Okay, so like I said, we didn't look at every state's association. You need to go and figure out what yours says, what positions they take. Even in red states, there were state associations that talked about equity and diversity and other left-wing ideas. And later on, we'll talk about how to access our critical race theory toolkit because you're going to want to, if you aren't familiar with those terms yet, you're going to want to look through our, that guide, our critical race theory guide so that you understand, especially if you're going to start going to school board meetings or you have been, but you haven't spoken yet, or you haven't emailed your school board members. You need to understand what these things mean because they don't mean what you think they mean. The, the people using them want you to think that it means something else so that they can get away with what they're doing. Your regional or your state association might be totally fine. And also a note, I, we couldn't find any regional associations websites. So that could just be, you know, like a little part of your state. All the school boards are, that are from that little part of your state are in a region. And it doesn't seem like they have websites. They might, there, there could be easily be some across the country, but we couldn't find any. But we know they exist because they're listed on the state association websites that we looked at. And they might even list their meeting times. They might say, you know, this region's association is meeting on this day at this time. So we know they exist and we see reference to them, but we couldn't find any websites for them. But they might be fine. Your local school board might be great, your regional might be great, your, your state might be great. National is not great, no matter how you look at it. But my guess is after looking at a few of them, that most of the state associations are probably, they probably tilt left also. A lot of these associations seem to just sort of be another front for teacher unions, the teachers' unions. So, um, and we know the teachers' unions are very left-wing. So it's not a surprise that these, these associations are as well. Okay, let's go to the next page. So on page 23 is an example of this. So we include an example in the guide of the Texas State Board Association, some text from their website. The reason we did Texas is because Texas is that great red state of Texas, right? Everybody knows Texas is red, Texas is conservative, it's this great conservative state. And yet, the Texas State School Board Association is totally left-wing. And what they push is totally left-wing. So it's a great example of how conservative parents in a majority of a state can be conservative and want, you know, A, B, and C for their kids. Meanwhile, these private associations that are pushing policy down to your schools and lobbying lawmakers at the state and national level are actually working for XYZ and are in complete opposition to what the parents actually want. So this is what that page looks like and we'll kind of get into that, that text a little bit more next. So this is what I'm talking about, I talked about, we, we found references to the regional meetings. To find your state school, state board, or your state school board association, just use the internet. Type in your state's name and the words, "school boards association." That's it, it should pop right up. Once you find it, comb through their website. I want you to look at their mission, their values, their priorities, their legislative advocacy, any downloads to like strategic plans or reports they've put out. You could go look at their social media accounts if they have any. I would also suggest that's, it's not on here, but I would suggest that you, so like, let's say it's Texas State, Texas State School Board Association. And then I would add annual conference to my search query, right? Or events, or something to pull up past events that they've had. Because those, if those websites are still up, those will tell you a lot. That they could tell you who some of their corporate sponsors are. What, one silver lining of everything from COVID being shut down is that all of these people, because they are all pushers of the panic porn when it comes to COVID, they put, they had, they've put all of their stuff online. So like all of their conferences are virtual or have been since last year. So that's great for us because that is a treasure trove of, of information about what they are doing. The next association we're going to talk about after this is the associate, the association for, I forget how it goes. A National Association of State Boards of Education. So these are like the state level appointed or elected state board of ed people. And they had a virtual conference and I watched some of their videos. And then just, I mean, it's amazing that what they say online, just like publicly put it out there. It was crazy. So you can find these things. So also look up any sort of events or conferences or videos that you can find from them too. Okay, this is so key, this point right here. When you find stuff, whether it's printed, you know, text that you're reading, like the Texas, Texas page, which I'm going to show you closer up so you can read what that screenshot was. If you, whether it's text or it's pictures or it's video, if it's a report or whatever it is, social media that you can screenshot, whatever it is, download it, screenshot it. You need to save this information because I have a feeling that as soon as, you know, this webinar is out there and with the, with the scrutiny they're getting from the DOJ letter they sent. And the more people find out about their history, that this is not a one-time weird thing that they did, that they have been doing this for decades, like decades, they have been undermining you in America. I have a feeling they're going to be pulling those things down off their websites. And if we don't have the evidence, we will not be able to hold them accountable. So please, whatever you find, pull it, you know, screenshot it, download it as a PDF. If you don't know how to do that, ask somebody who, who does. Or at the end, you'll, we have an email address that you can contact us at. Send us a link and say, "I don't know how to PDF this." And so please help because it's got some, some evidence of what they're up to and we can help you do those things. Just, it's, this is key, key, key. Okay, so here's the page. I wanted you to see the page that we took from the Texas Association, the Texas State School Boards Association. Okay, and then we're going to, I'm going to blow up that text so you can see it better. But this is the page that it is on, we just copied and pasted it, okay? So red Texas, here we go. These are their legislative priorities. And so when, when I say legislative priorities, this is what I mean. They go and they lobby the Texas Legislature and the Governor's Office for these legislative priorities. And let me back up just one second and say, how did they get these legislative priorities as an association? They propose, somebody proposes them, like they might have a committee that proposes these things or individual members might be able to propose them. I don't, it probably varies from state to state, how their association works. Somehow it gets proposed and then they vote on it. And what is the state board association, who is it made up of? It's made up of local school board members. So your local school board member, who is a member of the state association, votes on whether or not this should become a legislative priority. There could be some small differences, but the ones, the ones I looked at and like at the national level, that's how they do it. They just, they vote on it. They get like a slate of policies, so maybe like an annual conference or maybe online and they vote. So do you know how your local school board member is voting on things like this? Because then what they do is they turn around and they go to the state legislature and, and in their massive numbers that they, that they say that they represent, right? They're saying they represent all the school boards in Texas. And as such, they are actually representing the parents of Texas and the other taxpayers and citizens of Texas. Because they're elected, right? They're elected and so that's who they represent. So they're coming with all this firepower and clout and credibility. And then this is what they're pushing, okay? So they call upon the Texas Legislature to prohibit the expansion of charter schools. Okay, to reduce the impact of charter schools on the state budget and on local public schools. And on and on and on about charter schools. Diversity and cultural awareness. They call upon the Texas Legislature to support diversity and cultural awareness initiatives throughout districts, through staff and student education and restorative teaching and disciplinary practices that treat all students with equality. So I'm just going to pause there. Again, if you know critical race theory, you know that what they are talking about here is like smoke and mirrors, okay? So first of all, restorative teaching and disciplinary practices, that needs to be defined because if it's, if it's, because it means, I can tell you, it means discriminatory disciplinary practicing, practices and discriminatory teaching, which then makes it ironic that they're using the word equality because equality and equity are not the same. But I have a feeling they put equality in there to trick people who are reading it. Oh, because well, obviously we should, we want kids treated equally when they're in trouble, right? Well, just look up restorative disciplinary practices or restorative justice. It means you treat people differently based on race. You treat kids differently based on race. So if one, one race, if they do, they do something, you know, a kid does something wrong at school and they're of one race, then they get a certain punishment. But if they're a different race, they get a much harsher punishment. It is not equality at all. So this is the elected school board members voting to have this be a legislative priority, which they then go to this Texas State Legislature and the governor and lobby for. Okay, governance, they want the Texas State Legislature to recognize and preserve the right of public school boards to associate and collaborate and communicate the needs of their students and schools with, both directly and through representative organizations with lawmakers. I love this one because it sounds sort of just like dry and kind of logical or whatever. But if you read between the lines, what they're really saying is they don't want anybody trying to stop them from lobbying. And I want you to think about this. I want you to think about publicly elected officials, right? So you have school board members, they are elected by the people. They represent the people, they serve the people who have elected them. What they're doing here is they're getting together in a private organization. These are private organizations, okay? But they're funding them with tax dollars. They're voting on things through this private organization that then turns around and lobbies our, our, our other elected representatives for policies that parents are attending the school board meetings to protest. And they want to make sure that the legislature does not put any sort of limitations on what they're allowed to do. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at by, by legislatures. Now, we don't want to, we don't want to stop anybody's First Amendment rights, obviously. But seems, there's got to be some, something, like maybe they are not allowed to be funded by tax dollars anymore. You know, or they have to, they can't say they, they can't be a private organization that says they represent parents and students because they don't, they weren't elected, right? So anyways, it's just, it's really corrupt. Vouchers, they call on the Texas Legislature to prevent any transfer of public education funds through the use of vouchers or savings accounts or tax credits to private or out-of-state entities. So they don't want vouchers either, obviously, we know this, public, you know, again, teachers' unions priorities, right? Okay, so my question to the, if there are any Texans watching, watching this would be, do you oppose charter schools? Do you oppose vouchers? Do you know how your local school board members voted on these legislative priorities in the state association? Is it the job of your locally elected officials to lobby the state government through a private organization on your behalf if you have not asked them to do that or you have not given them permission to do so on your behalf? What are their definitions of diversity and cultural awareness? What about the other points like restorative teaching? How do they define it? And do Texans agree with that definition and that that's a good thing to push? And then I, we note that they want the, the state to protect them to be able to continue this behavior. So these questions could be asked of any of us in any state if, if, if our state associations are also pushing these left-wing ideas. But my point here is Texans don't even probably know that their school, state school board association are pushing these things on their supposed behalf. Okay, so this is what I was saying earlier. The association is going to go to the legislature, they're going to say they represent all the school boards in Texas. And so by extension, they represent you, the parents and the grandparents. They represent the students, they represent other community members who, you know, pay taxes and are invested in the schools, what the schools are doing. And that carries a lot of weight. And now you call up your state legislator or your congressman and you say, "Hey, I don't want CRT taught in the schools." Right? And who are you? You're one person, you have two kids, you have a spouse, there's four of you. Who do you think has more impact on what politicians do? Do you think that it's you and the three other people in your house? Or do you think it's these lobbying organizations that come in and say, "We represent tens of thousands of people." And like the National Association says, "We represent 50 million students." I mean, you know, so just think about that. Okay. So as I said before, it seems like many school boards right now, not all of them, there's some good ones out there, but a lot of them really are simply extensions of the teachers' unions. And so their priorities and values reflect those of the unions which are left-wing. And therefore the, all the associations do too, because they're made up of the same people. And we believe this is going on in every state. Like I said, we couldn't look at every state's information, but it just seems logical knowing the state of education today and school boards and everything that it's likely going on in every state and that everything we're going through here is really just the tip of the iceberg. I will say that last I heard, there was 11, I could be totally wrong. This is what the last I heard, was that there were 11 state board associations that said they were going to rescind their membership from the National School Boards Association because of the domestic terrorist thing. I don't know if they actually have or if they're just sort of making noise about it. If they actually do, then I would say those state associations, you know, might be a lot better than the other ones that haven't done that. But again, I would look at all, I would find, you know, with a fine comb, go through their, go through their websites and see what they're really about. Okay, pages 24 through 26 focus specifically on the National School Boards Association. So that's what we started talking about at the beginning with their labeling of parents as domestic terrorists. So we talked about the, the local boards feed into regional boards, which feed into the state associations, which all feed into this national association. A recurring theme throughout all of their materials is they represent 50 million students and 14, over 14,000 school districts. Gosh, they are so important, right? Man, they represent so many Americans that elected officials should definitely listen to them. Like that's the message that you see throughout their materials. It's the clout that they use, like we are powerful, look at how many people we represent. And I can't tell you on how many things they brag about their headquarters being located right outside DC for easy access to who? Your representatives and your senators. It's just, it's, it's hilarious and sick how much they brag about their access. I can't remember which document it is, but it's one of their like anniversary reports. or strategic plan or something. And they have an entire section that's all about how the his, their, so maybe it's their history one. Uh, like 60 years of, of the SBA or something, where they say, we have met with every president since, you know, I forget, 1975 or something. And we've gone to the White House this many times and, and we, we've met with every speaker. I mean, like they list all this, you know, they just brag about how they're just lobbying. Um, you know, and you have no say in it. So it's just gross. Okay, um, the NSBA sponsors, they have corporate sponsors like we talked about. And this is, this is fun. The, uh, opportunities for corporations to support the NSBA, uh, their various initiatives. And if, I guess if you give enough, you are given an honorary membership to one of their racial councils. Isn't that great? They've got, they've got racial councils. The National School Boards Association has racial councils. And if you give enough money as a corporation, you get to be an honorary member of one. So let's look at some of their initiatives and projects. They, they got a whole bunch. Like I said, it was spider web. You go here and they got this thing going and they got this thing going. So it is not just, they claim at first, they, they kind of at first claim to be like, it's just sort of a best practices thing. And I think that's actually how it started. If you go back and look, it's, it seems like it started by school boards getting together and talking and saying, hey, what's the best practice for this? Like, how do you, you know, what are you guys doing? Maybe let's say with overcrowding or, um, how are you, how are you dealing with this issue? And I think that's, you know, that's fair enough, like asking for advice, things like that. Oh, that's a good idea. We could try that here, you know? Or we could talk about that with the, our community members. We could propose that to the community. But it has turned into this just behemoth, corrupt, gross thing that is anti-American and it's, you know, anti-parent, it's anti-student. And it's just about power for the people involved. So you, we're going to go through some of these things that they are working on. So in July of this year, they had an equity online symposium, an entire symposium about equity. The theme was actions for safe and inclusive schools. And again, the words safe and inclusive are not what you would think they mean. Safe to most people would be, you know, um, the opposite of what happened in Loudoun County, where a girl was sexually assaulted in the bathroom, in the girls bathroom by a boy wearing a skirt. Um, we would think keeping that, those things from happening would be safe. That's how most of us would think of the word safe. But the word safe for them, especially when combined with inclusive, means more along the lines of, um, we have deemed certain students to be part of a protected and oppressed class and nothing can be done or said to offend them. So that means that your first, your students' First Amendment right, if they don't belong to that group, can be abridged, they can be violated. Um, you know, like you can't wear a Trump shirt or whatever, but everybody else can wear what they want. Um, things like that. Uh, and that's totally fine. And that's basically what inclusive ends up with. It ends up with, um, segregation and it ends with violating people's First Amendment rights. So, uh, that was their theme. And then they also held one in February. And if you, you can go and look this up, like just, and we might, I think we might link to it in the guide so that you can just click on it and go look and scroll through the event website. And you will see they spend a lot of time on equity, which again, real quick, equity is, means discrimination. Um, it means you look at people through the lens of groups. There's no individuals, there's no individual circumstances. Um, we're not, nobody's an individual human. You know, they are all part of identity groups. Um, and you have to make groups, uh, uh, have equal outcomes. So not equality of opportunity, but equal outcomes. And so in order to have group A have the, I mean, and everybody in that group, the entire group, regardless of individual differences, have the exact same outcomes as group B, you necessarily have to discriminate. That is equity. Okay? So they think equity is awesome. They think that discrimination is awesome. Okay, they also have something called a Center for Safe Schools. Again, that word safe, it's not what you think it means. Um, and part of the Center for Safe School is Whole Child Health, the Whole Child Health Initiative, which includes Critical Race Theory, Trojan Horses, Likes School Climate. Again, that means like, oh, there's a, there's a kid here who likes Trump. And that is real, that's making it a violent climate for anybody who does not like Trump. Or, um, or maybe they wear a Second Amendment shirt. Oh, that climate, that is just, you know, the climate at school now is dangerous and offensive and threatening. Um, social emotional learning, that is a whole, that could be a whole other guide and, um, uh, training webinar, but SEL is itself, it's the, that is the implementation of Critical Race Theory in your school. So you should look for SEL, Social Emotional Learning. Restorative Justice, we talked about that. That is literally discriminatory, um, discipline. Um, and then mental health, which we're going to get into in, uh, some few, some next slides. So the Whole Child Health, first of all, it just seems creepy. Like the NSBA doing this Whole Child Health reminds me of stuff the UN does. And it's like, we don't need you to even think about the Whole Child, okay? Get away, get away from our children. Um, so here's the screenshot of their page about Whole Child Health. And I don't know how big it is on your screen, but if you can see under their resources there, you'll see they have Mental Health America, Mental Health America, Mental Health America. So they closely align and work with this group called Mental Health America, which I'm in, I'm about to talk about. Okay? So here's the link, or this is screenshot of Mental Health America. So when you first hear Mental Health America, you're thinking, oh, some group that's concerned with mental health, right? So okay, that's probably fine. That's great. Um, there are people who need help with mental health and good, there's somebody to help them. Except that of course, Mental Health America is like extremely left wing, like crazy left wing, okay? Um, they are all on board Critical Race Theory. You can see right here, our commitment to anti-racism. And again, you gotta look at our, our CRT guide to know what anti-racism really means. Because we literally live in, or we live in, not literally, but we live in the upside down where things mean the opposite, right? It's opposite day and anti-racism is actually racism. Because again, you're dealing with discriminating so that group A can have exact equal outcome to group B, which is impossible when you are dealing with individuals. Um, so they're all about anti-racism, which is actually racism. You can see another screenshot, their commitment, um, to advancing an anti-racist agenda and promoting health equity. We heard a lot about health equity with COVID. Um, and that was, that's the idea of, um, making sure that health resources go to certain groups and not other groups based on race. Um, which is crazy, which is just crazy. It's evil. It's evil and it's crazy. Uh, so they're real into that. Uh, racial injustice has caused trauma and harm. Uh, you can read through this, uh, if you want to go to their website. It just, it's, it's just all Critical Race Theory over and over again. Um, in response, this is on their website too. In response to the murder of George Floyd, Daniel Prudential, many other black indigenous and people of color individuals, MHA is undertaking a review of how its policy work could be more effective, could more effectively advance equity over a period of more than eight months and, and so on and so forth. They talk about this. So, um, so yeah, their, their goal is equity, which is equality of outcomes by using discrimination against groups of people. You can think of that as like a definition of equity. So that's what they want. And this was just too good not to include in here. They have a social media post, uh, when we made, when we wrote the guide, they had, they were promoting one of their social media posts on their website. And it said, the, uh, it was, they were promoting an article and the article was titled Decolonizing Therapy, Why An Apolitical Mental Health System Doesn't Work. And then they included this quote, so the quote they chose to highlight said, "This individualism-focused mental health system is further perpetuating the oppression of particular groups." So, individual A has mental health issues and would like to go see, uh, a therapist. Uh, and they are saying that when that person goes to see the therapist, if that therapist doesn't make it all about the identity groups that that person, uh, is, fits in, uh, then they are perpetuating the oppression of certain groups of people. And that they can't just talk to the, to this person A about maybe some trauma they had in their life, you know? Like maybe their parents died when they were young or whatever, you know? Like whatever is going on and that they need help working through. Um, it's not about that. It's actually about whatever group they belong in. So they literally want to take mental health and move it away from like a doctor-patient relationship and working on what that individual needs to work on. Um, and turning it into racial group grievance, like venting sessions or something. And if you don't do that, you're perpetuating oppression against the groups that Critical Race Theory says is oppressed. So this is who the National School Board Association chooses to highlight and send people to for resources. Which means your local officials could be part of sending people to that website. So here we are to understand Critical Race Theory better, because this is all intertwined. You can download our, our how-to guide for that at UnitedWeStandCenter.com. So I'll just hang out on this slide for just a couple of seconds extra. You can screenshot it or write it down, um, or just open a new tab and, and go right there. UnitedWeStandCenter.com. That's what the guide looks like. You'll see that logo on the webpage as well. Um, and that is where you can go. It's a very long guide, but it's organized in such a ways you can kind of get the, the basic definitions and the, the basics at the front. And then as you keep going, there's, there's resources, like template letters you can send your elected officials and school board members and things like that. Uh, and then in the back is like some real in-depth, longer descriptions and history and kind of where did this come from? Um, but that way you don't have to wade through all of that to get the basics down. So I highly recommend after this webinar, go download that and learn these terms, what they mean. Okay, so the question is, why is the National School Boards Association, an organization that supposedly represents America's school districts by extension, parents and students and families? Um, why are they using and sharing resources from a radically left-wing organization like Mental Health America? And that's not the only one they point people towards or that they partner with for these initiatives. So why is that? We deserve answers. We need to know why. Okay, here's another one of their events that we found. Advocacy Institute Online 2021. Again, like I said, they put everything online because they're super scared of COVID or are using it for power, whichever one. But a lot of their stuff's online, so that's helpful. Um, so it's training for their members for legislative advocacy. And one session they had was called Special Training Best Practices for Lobbying Capitol Hill. So that's DC, that's your, your representatives or, and your senators. Um, so, uh, you know, which one, which of them are they lobbying in particular? And what are they lobbying for? And what are they lobbying against? Wouldn't you love to know? Now, they will say, we're a private organization, so like this is none of your business. But like I said at the beginning, at the same time, they're also saying, but we represent 14,000 school districts and 50 million students and their families. Um, so, and their members are publicly elected by you to institute the policies you want. So they're, they are working like exactly against you. And I just love, they just brag about, like I said, they just brag about it. They're like, oh, look at us. We are so cool. We're so good at lobbying on Capitol Hill. So another, uh, one of their partners and, or this is one of their initiatives or centers. Um, and then we're going to talk about who this center works with. So this is the Center for Public Education. And they are, you know, this center is the, the arm that is basically working against, uh, anything that's not public schools. So you know, so charter schools, even though they're public, but, but they're not traditional public. Vouchers, private schools, homeschooling. Um, they produce research and they send it to school boards across the country. So I think it's interesting. They say they represent school boards, but in reality, what they do is they take these policies and these reports and these research papers, and then they send them out to the school boards. So they're actually dictating and pushing policy down to local school boards, rather than local school boards coming up to them and saying, hey, you know, like, all the conservative districts in the country, like why, why are their school board members not in the NSBA pushing for conservative, um, policies nationwide, right? Uh, or advocate for advocate, so that the association will advocate for conservative policies. So they are, they sent this, they have a report, the, the Center for Public Education. They, they did this report along with, um, something called the National Coalition for Public Education. Like I said, it is a hijra. There's just like all these crazy organizations. I don't know where they're getting their money from, but they exist and they have staff. Um, and they're putting out all these things. So this is the report that they sent in January 2021 to every school board in the country. They sent this to every school board in the country. Okay? And it talks about how to, oh, I'm sorry, they didn't send it to the school board. They sent it to the legislate, legislators. But there's another report that they sent out to all of the school boards. Um, so they're lobbying legislators to reject vouchers that allow kids to go to private schools. Um, the National Coalition for Public Education, uh, their entire mission, they have one mission, one goal, one concern. And that is to oppose vouchers going to private schools. It would be really interesting to see how much this NP, NCPE is tied to teachers unions, wouldn't it? I would love to know if that's, if they're actually part of the teachers unions. Like, is that where they get their funding from? Um, and then they just try to make it seem like it's this sort of nonpartisan, um, you know, social welfare nonprofit that's totally unrelated. Because this certainly sounds like something the teachers unions want. And then this just keeps going. So the website for National Coalition for Public Education is, their website is maintained by something called, a group called Americans United For Separation Of Church And State. That group is also a, I mean, rabid, rabidly left-wing organization. And they oppose even the most modest religious liberty claims or positions. Um, they want religion 100% shut down in America. Um, like, I mean, just, they don't want anyone to have any religious claims. You know, no exemptions, like no conscientious, you know, objecting, nothing. Like there's, there, you're not allowed to like be religious. It's, it's very, very hardcore left-wing. So again, why is the NSBA aligning itself with these sorts of groups? We had Mental Health America, crazy left-wing. National Coalition for Public Education, which is, which is, um, only, you know, exists solely to stop kids from being able to use, uh, vouchers to go to good private schools. And this Americans United For Separation Of Church And State. Okay, another initiative of NSBA is called DIRE, dismantling institutional racism in education. So first of all, again, our, our Critical Race Theory guide will talk about, uh, institutional racism, which is also called systemic racism. And it doesn't exist. It's not, it's, they've made it up. Um, it's one of the things that they've just made up and said exists and therefore we have to fight it. Um, let me just read this little part, a little bit of this out loud. Uh, dismantling institutional racism in education. As schools across the country responded to acts of systemic racism in the summer of 2020, you know, um, all the rioting and burning of cities, yes. NSBA launched the dismantling institutional racism in education initiative to assist state school boards, associations and other education leaders in addressing racial inequities. DIRE acknowledges that institutional structural and systemic racism has been ingrained in the history of America and throughout its public education system. Okay, that is critical race theory. So here you have, you know, you had a bunch of, uh, teachers and Democrat politicians and teachers unions and activists and everybody saying, this critical race theory is not being taught in American schools. You parents are crazy. It is, it's a, it's a obscure legal academic theory that is only taught and discussed at the highest levels of law school. You guys are crazy, right? And here you have the National School Boards Association that supposedly represents all the school boards in America and has membership, at least until recently, from every school board in America, or at least every state association in America was a part of it. And they are saying this, uh, that we are going to assist the state boards associations and other educational leaders in addressing racial inequities. And they're teaching that this systemic racism has been ingrained in the history of our, our America and throughout its public education system? Like, they're just bragging about it. They're saying, Like, they're just bragging about it. They're saying, "This is critical race theory, and we're going to help you implement it in your schools." Again, they're pushing ideologies and policies downward. They're not taking, they're not, they're not taking ideas from the local school boards and bringing them upwards. They are their own beast and they're pushing it down into your local schools. Okay, equity demands discrimination. That we talked about that because it's about equal outcomes for groups. It's insidious how they claim they want to eradicate discriminatory practices. On the other page it talks about how they want to, they want to get rid of discriminatory practices as they promote the idea of equity, which demands discrimination. Quote, "Educational equity is the intentional allocation of resources, instruction, and opportunities according to need." How is that not discriminatory? That is not equality of opportunity. That is not setting an equal foundation or an equal footing for everybody. They're literally telling you that it's discrimination, but then they're gaslighting you, saying, "We want to end discriminatory practices." But that all has to do with critical race theory and what they say is discrimination and what they say is not discrimination and all of that. So I thought that that sounded, that that quote sounds like Karl Marx. So it just sounds very Marxist. And they also believe that being colorblind is a bad thing. The NSBA thinks being colorblind is bad. So there's a screenshot here where you can see that on colorblindness from an article called "Uncomfortable Conversations." "Being colorblind disregards the circumstances of that person and prevents one from being inquisitive about another's life, culture, and story. In short, colorblindness whitewashes the world in an attempt to comfort ourselves and make believe that Black and Brown people, for example, all have the same experiences and opportunities in a predominantly white school and community when deep down inside, we know that that is not their reality." We all know that colorblindness means none of that. It means that you treat people with kindness and respect, no matter what their skin color is. You treat them like a human being with dignity who is made in the image of God, no matter what their skin color is. That's what colorblindness is. So, but this is what the NSBA is pushing with your tax dollars. Okay, just another example. They were on the wrong side of a First Amendment case. They filed an amicus brief on a case involving a student's free speech rights, arguing against the student's constitutional rights. They were on that side of it. And we have a link in the guide. You can go to Beckett Law, who also filed an amicus brief on behalf of the student, so you can read what the case was about just to get an idea of where the NSBA is on your child or every student in America, where they are on their constitutional rights. Again, it's not good stuff. So let's just talk real quickly about their Equity Councils that we mentioned before, that if you're a corporate sponsor who gives enough, you can be an honorary member of one of these Equity Councils, which is a racial council. So they have Council, American Indian, Alaska Native Council of School Board Members, National Black Council of School Board Members, National Hispanic Council of School Board Members as examples. Now, somewhere in their literature, it talks about, and it might be on the page about them, that they come up with policy suggestions for, you know, or legislative advocacy suggestions or just positions, you know, mission statements, like values, those kinds of things. These councils come up with those and then present them to the rest of the association, like to vote on. So you have these racist racial councils coming up with these racist ideas that the NSBA then votes on and supports most of the time. Again, with your tax dollars supposedly representing you. But they're also a private organization that you get nothing, you don't get to be a part of. Okay, and then on page 27 are some questions that we have suggested that you start asking your school board. You need to ask them in two ways. You need to ask them in writing. And I would even go ahead and copy somebody else, like another parent, and send it to every school board member and say you want the questions answered in writing also. And then you need to go to the school board meetings and ask these questions out loud. And you need to say, when you're speaking, you need to say, "I have emailed these to every school board member because we want, we, the parents, the community, who pay your salaries and who pay for the schools and whose children you're teaching, we want the answers in writing so that you can't go back and change what you've said. But we also want them publicly out loud so that everybody can hear them." You could also, I would also print out the questions and hand them out at the meeting so they can't deny, "I didn't see the email," or whatever. Okay, well, I've got handouts for you right here. You can see the questions right here. And then you need to go every single month and ask for the answers if they haven't answered you yet. If they don't answer you out loud at a meeting, but they answer you privately in an email, print that out, bring it to the school board meeting, and read their answers out loud. You should also, you know, you could also make a bunch of those copies and hand them out to the other attendees at the meeting. The point is, you want everything to be public and transparent and out in the open. You don't want them trying to email you privately and not have anybody else know what's going on. And you want everybody to know that they have been, that these questions have been put to the board, especially if they're not answering. You can also use these as questions to help you with school board elections. So let's say you've got a good person who's running against a person who refuses to answer these questions. So when you're, if you're campaigning or trying to, you know, persuade people to vote for this other person, you can, you can use these questions and say, "So-and-so refuses to answer these questions about their involvement with the organization that said, 'We are domestic terrorists for asking questions like these.'" And this other candidate can say, "As soon as I'm on the board, I will find these answers out and I will give them to the community." So the questions are things like, "How many and which members of your school board are members of NSBA? Are you paying dues to the NSBA? And if so, how much? And does the money come from our tax dollars?" And you should ask for evidence of these things too, as you're getting answers and discussing them. Can we see how you're voting? So let's say, school board member A is a member. You find out that person is a member of the NSBA. And maybe the state school board association. All of these questions can also go for your state school board association, okay? They're not just for the national one. You really need to find out at the state level too. You say, "So-and-so, you're a member of the NSBA. How are you voting? I want your voting record. I want to know on which advocacy things, which policy things, which legislative things did you vote on and how did you vote? You work for us. And when you go to that association, you supposedly represent us, then that means your votes are our business. You need to be transparent about what you're voting on." And again, the point is to find out how they're voting so you can hold them accountable. But you also can hold them accountable if they refuse to tell you. Because again, if you've got somebody who's running against that person, you can say, "Why are they hiding their votes from you? They represent you, but they won't tell you how they voted on these issues at the NSBA." Well, you know, candidate over here, if they beat the candidate, you know, the sitting school board member, they're not even going to be members of the NSBA. They're going to rescind the membership. And then you don't even have to worry about it. Or they'll find out how they voted or whatever. So you can use it to still hold them accountable, even if they refuse to answer you. Why does the NSBA have race-based councils? And I would go ahead and ask, "And do you approve of race-based councils? Yes or no?" No question, like, no, no trying to hide and obfuscate and dance around the answer. Yes or no, do you support race-based councils at the NSBA? What kind of influence does the NSBA have on our school and its policies? Jenny Beth has kind of gone through some of this question, you know, going through some of these questions with her local school board. And she also asked them for open records requests for communications between their school board and the NSBA. You could also do communications between the school board and the state board association. That would be useful too. So if they won't answer you about the kind of influence, then maybe you can find that out with an open records request. How can, how can we give input about the NSBA positions and policies since they say they represent us and the community? Like, okay, fine, you want to be a member of the NSBA? You want our school board to be a member of the NSBA? Then we want to know everything you're voting on and it needs to come to us. You need to present it to the community and we will, we will give you feedback about how we want you to vote. That's, I mean, if they're going to represent us, like, that's how it should be done. What's the exact purpose of the NSBA? And how does it make our school district better to associate with them? What is the role and influence of a corporate sponsor of the NSBA? And why do they have corporate sponsors? Who are the corporate sponsors? Why does the NSBA only work with progressive organizations? If they represent 50 million students, shouldn't they work with an equal number of conservative organizations as well and take their input as well? And my favorite question, why is a private nonprofit organization speaking on behalf of the citizenry to lawmakers? Like, why can't our school board simply go to the lawmakers and say, "Our school community would like this"? Like, why don't they just go directly to the lawmakers? Why are they going through this weird private organization? Okay, I'll try to go a little quicker through the Association for State Boards of Education. This is a really handy chart that we link to in the guide that tells you how your, the makeup of your state board. And it was just done by the association in June of 2021, so it should be pretty up to date. So you can see, like, Alabama, the selection of the state board members is a partisan ballot. The selection of the chief state school officer is, says SBE appoints. So that's the State Board of Education appoints that person. The selection of the state board chair or president in Alabama, the governor, the governor serves as the president. The number of voting state board members, the length of their terms. Is the state board established in statute or constitution? Authority for the teacher licensure, State Board of Education. Authority for standards adoption, State Board of Education. So this is really handy. So I live in Idaho, and Idaho, the State Board of Education members are all appointed by the governor. So it totally is going to depend on who's in the governor's seat. You know, who's on the state board, if they're good or if they're squishy, you know, or if they're compromised or corrupt. It's all going to depend on who's the governor, because he's appointing all of them. But yours might be elected. So this, we link to this chart. Go to it, scroll, print it out, you know, write it down, whatever. Get to know how your state board of education is set up, who runs it. Was it statute or constitution that created it? Who's in charge of, you know, the standards adoptions, things like that? Most of the time you'll see it's the State Board of Education. And then that's going to freak you out when you see that the Association for State Boards of Education is pushing nothing but critical race theory and other critical theory ideas down to your state board of education, who then chooses the standards that every school in your state is supposed to follow. Okay, so figure out how they're put together. Look up the website for your state board of education to see what they're up to and how much they align with the National Association. NASB is the National Association of State Boards of Education. So that's this state board level, this board instead of the collection of local school boards. Okay, here's their website, Association for State Boards of Education. This is their tagline. "The only organization dedicated solely to helping state boards advance equity and excellence in public education." Their entire mission is equity in your state system, the entire state, your entire state. Okay, and these are the people that have the power to implement it. Their members come from state boards. So I'm in Idaho. My state board of education, I, and sometimes it's hard to figure out. Sometimes you can't figure it out. So we're working on trying to figure out if they are, if they are all members of this board, or if some of them are. So that's what, that's what you're going to want to do. Look at this, this square over here, "The Role of Schools in Racial Justice." Yes, because all we care about is critical race theory. Okay, here's on their core values page. "We integrate equity and excellence in everything we do. As a learning organization, we will periodically refine and reflect upon our definition of equity and how we have integrated it into our work. We define equity, diversity, and inclusion, which is normally known as DEI, not EDI. An equitable education is one in which all students receive what they need to thrive in school. To realize equity in learning environments, policymakers will develop informed policies to eliminate systems, institutional practices, and cultural norms, excuse me, that keep students of varied backgrounds and circumstances from flourishing in school." So it's all about the institutional systemic racism. And again, it's equal outcomes, so they will discriminate in order to try to achieve equal outcomes, which, by the way, you can never achieve. And so they say the work is never done. You will never get there because you can never make one group equal to another group in terms of their outcomes. Because individuals are just different. And it's a silly idea. But they use that disparity. It's the disparity between the outcomes of groups that exists naturally in life without any, any systems of anything to say that systemic racism exists. Okay, diversity. "Varied backgrounds and circumstances of individual groups which schools, districts, and state leaders embrace to achieve excellence in teaching, learning." This just sounds like a lot of gobbledygook, but diversity means, in this, in these contexts, diversity means people who are in lockstep ideologically, but who might look different. That's it. That's why Black conservatives are never welcome, they're never counted as diversity. Because it's about your ideology and what you advocate for and are an activist about. Okay, inclusion. "The creation of education systems in which individuals and groups of diverse backgrounds and circumstances operate in an atmosphere of mutual respect where they are empowered to participate fully." Again, this really just means that everybody else's free speech gets violated or, and your freedom of association and your freedom is violated in order to say this certain group of people have all the power. And if they're, if they say they're offended or upset, then, you know, that's all that matters. And that's how you end up with safe spaces and segregation. Okay, so again, a reminder to understand all of that better, to understand critical race theory better, download our guide at UnitedWeStandCenter.com. Here's from our guide. "Inclusion does not mean welcoming to all. Under CRT, inclusion means keeping out the ideas and speech that might offend identity groups and that's the groups that CRT labels as marginalized and oppressed. And this definition of inclusion necessarily results in speech restrictions." Notice that the NASBE implies that some people cannot participate fully unless there are systems in place to protect them. And those systems are always speech codes or violations of other people's constitutional and God-given rights. And these are the people who are on your state boards of education, okay? One of the panelists on their conference, like I said, these are all online. Go online. It was their Virtual Legislative Conference 2021. You can find all their videos on YouTube and watch them. So one of the ones I watched was "Exploring Equity Frameworks in Policymaking," because I thought that sounded really fun. And one of the ladies who spoke as a presenter had her background, like her green screen background, set to Equity VA. So after that, I went and looked up Equity VA, so Equity Virginia, and it is, woo! I mean, this is some messed up stuff. It's in Virginia and it, it's just, you can look it up if you want. But I highly recommend listening to this session because you'll see they are obsessed with race and equity, equity, equity. And remember, equity is not equality. And these are the people, I believe this guy down in the bottom, the one we've highlighted here. I think the guy down in the bottom-left corner, he was the president of the association at the time. And just sitting there going, "Wow, you're influencing, you, you guys are members of state boards and you're influencing my state board of education." It's terrifying. Okay, so download and read their strategic plan. Again, on their website, they've got all this stuff, so get it while we can get it, right? Print it out, download it, save it to your computer, because they are probably going to pull these things as soon as they get enough negative attention. This was from fall of 2018. Just read through it. I mean, it's not that long. Oh, here are some of the organizations that they're involved with. Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, National Council of State Legislatures. So you've probably heard of Alec, which is what the association, or the American Legislative Exchange Council. Those are mostly conservative state legislators, libertarian, conservative, some kind of center ones. National Council of State Legislators, NCSL, they're all the liberal ones. So again, they're working with a liberal state legislature organization. National Governors Association has Republican and Democrat members, and it is one of the most insidious, sinister organizations. A lot of really bad stuff comes out of the NGA. Like, bad stuff, lockdown idea, I mean, just bad stuff. You can research them too, but of course, they're working with the NGA. Common, Seek Common Ground, Left Common, uh, seek common ground, left wing. So again, they only work with left-wing organizations. Do they represent you? You either elected them or you elected the governor who is appointing them. Are they representing you adequately? And why are they working with every state board of education in the country? Okay, so in this part of their strategic plan, just highlighting some of the best stuff for you. Raise funds from a diverse array of philanthropic and corporate sources based on our organizational priorities and member boards needs regionally and nationally. So why, what do they need this money for? Where does the money go and how is it used to influence your local schools? Or how is it used to better your schools? Why do they need money from all of these corporations? And I think that's a legitimate question to ask. Again, the state board of education is an actual like government entity. You're either electing them or your governor who you elected is appointing them. They have a public service job to do. So why is this association they're a part of raising all this money to do what? Are they using it to lobby your state government for certain standards to be added, things like that? What are they doing with this money? Another highlight from their strategic plan is their premier core values. Equity and excellence will be integrated into everything we do. It's all about equity, equity, equity. Oh, and they have this little circular graph thing. It's really, it makes, it makes no sense. I showed it to my husband also and we both stared at it for a very long time and it makes no sense. I think somebody just put it together with the words, the key buzzwords they wanted to use. But it actually makes no sense. Just as an aside. Okay, so page nine of their strategic plan. They, for every goal they have listed, they have an implications for diversity, equity and inclusion assessment. So goal one, implications for diversity, equity and inclusion. So for their goal number one, what are the implications for DEI? And then they go through, I, I'm not going to go through all of these because this is running on pretty long, but you can, you can go back and pause it. Or you can pause it because it's not live. So you can pause it and, and read through these, but it's just a reminder that they have a goal, you know, an annual goal or a five-year goal or whatever. And it all, it has to go through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion, which is critical race theory. So it has to go through the lens of critical race theory. So our, our question is what effect will this aggressive pursuit, that's the word they used, aggressive pursuit of equity have on your state and your state's education policy, even if you live in a red state? And did you vote for this? Isn't this great? I mean, on one hand, it's terrible, but on the other hand, finding all of this out was, is really great. Because if, you know, like, let's say if you elect your state board when, when those elections are up, you know, and they're happening. You can go to the candidate now and you can say, you can take the strategic report and you can send them this PowerPoint or you know, you can send them the websites and you can say, do you stand by this? Is this what you, are you going to be a member of this? Do you support this? Like, get them on camera. If they have a meeting, go get them on camera answering yes or no. You know, and you can get candidates to run against them who aren't going to support this kind of stuff. So transparency is good. So it's, it's, it's a welcome, it's a welcome. It's good. It's good for us to, to know that this is happening. Let's see, another part of their strategic plan on page 12. Above all, we will apply a lens of equity and excellence to everything we do so that our focus and that of our member boards remains fixed on ensuring that all students get the resources they need to succeed. Again, it's this sort of like jumbled up language that kind of sounds good. Well, yeah, I want to make sure all the students have what they need, obviously, like, you know, and when I want things to be equal between students, we all do. But that's not really what they mean, right? It's, it's like, I think there's, there's some case in a university somewhere where I think after the George Floyd, some of the riots have been happening. There was a university professor who, he had a student ask him, I think it was a white student who emailed him and said, could you just let all the black students like not have to take the final because this is too emotionally taxing for them? Or take a test or do the rest of their work or something. And he was like, no, I'm not going to treat people differently based on their race. And they complained and like, it was, it was, I, I don't know if he had to quit. He's suing the school now, I think for about it, but, or if they fired him or what, but it was, it, you know, it was awful. And so in their eyes, that is like treating people equally. So you let some students not have to take the test because they're too emotional about something that's happening. And you let the other, but based on the groups that they, the identity groups that CRT puts them in, that the left puts them in. That's what these people are focused on. Okay, they also have, they are also part of this whole child and school safety thing that the NSBA whole child policy study group, safe and healthy schools. Again, it's all the same stuff from the, the NSBA. This is what I was talking about before, their 60th anniversary document. Read through this. This gives you a lot of good information and their history. And that's where I believe the section is where they're bragging about how many presidents they've sat with and how much influence they have. Okay, in 2015, their executive director said, quote, "The nation's state boards of education stand ready to redouble their commitment to educational equity." That was in 2015. That's a long time ago. That's six years ago. That's before, you know, that's before 2020 with the riots and George Floyd and everything. They, that's what I'm saying is that you read through their documents and you realize they've been doing this for a long time, a long time behind your back. You know, and we had no idea this was happening. And they all want more money and they expect all of us to defer to their expertise, right? So they're the experts, they're the ones, that's why they get to talk to all of the elected representatives on our behalf, because they're the experts, the educational experts. They brag about their influence in DC. They require dues from the state board education members, which again, you think they're paying out of pocket for that? No, it's coming from tax dollars, obviously. And it does not seem like any of them are taking direction from the voters. Again, it seems like they're crafting policies and pushing them down onto the state boards of education. Okay, again, these are the questions that we had for the NSBA. Just tweak them and you can ask the same of your state board of education. Are you, you know, but instead of, are you members of NSBA? It's are you members of the Association for, the National Association for State Boards of Education? Okay. And when you go through their documents, you might see something that you want to ask a question about too. But you can tweak these and use a lot of these questions without having to do much work. And then it was, it was disgusting. There's National Council of State Boards of Education executives. There's School Superintendent's Association, National Association of Secondary School Principals, uh, grade school principals. Council of Chief State School Officers, like, there's an, a private association for all of these positions and all of these groups. And they're all left-wing. If you just pop through some of their websites, you'll see they're all pushing hardcore LGBT agendas. They're all pushing CRT, critical race theory. They're all doing it and they're, and your principal's probably a part of it, your librarian's probably a part of it. They've got like other school administrator associations. Like they're, they're probably all a part of these associations and you have no idea what they're doing supposedly on your behalf. It's, it's overwhelming, but this is a good start. Okay, so your key takeaways, your key takeaways are these associations purport to speak for you. They lobby lawmakers at every level of government in your name. They speak to the media on your supposed behalf. They train and advise local school boards, very possibly your school board on procedures and policy. They are funded in part by your tax dollars. However, they are intimately tied to a plethora of very left-wing causes, corporations and organizations. And yet most people have no idea they exist and that they have more influence than parrots. And I believe that, let's see, summary of action items, that was the last slide. Okay, so summary of your action items. Download the how-to guide first and foremost, and go ahead and download our critical race theory guide as well. Ask your local school board about their associations with their state, with the state school board association and the national school boards association. Okay, use those questions, get them in writing and confront them publicly in person, out loud. Ask your state education board, your state board of education about their involvement with that association. And again, send it in writing. I know in Idaho that sometimes they have, they have meetings because they're a state board, they have meetings in different parts of the state. So like around the year or over the year. So there may not be, like, the next meeting might not be one you could get to, maybe it's too far away. But keep an eye on their calendar for meetings that are close enough for you to attend. Or maybe you know somebody in the other part of the state that could go to that one so that you can't, and they have like a public comment period during the meeting usually. So you could also confront them verbally with the questions and say, I already sent them to you, here's a printout. Same, same thing you're going to do with the local school board to find out how, what their involvement with the national organization is. And then let us know what you find so we can add it to our body of research. If you've found stuff that we should add to the guide, then, then send it to us. Or if you need help turning something into a PDF or if you have a question you know, or if you find out something crazy about your local school board, you want to share it, send it to us, we can help you with it. You want to email Jenny dot Beth at tpartypatriots.org. So you can see it right there at the bottom. J E N N Y dot B E T H at tpartypatriots.org. So I know that was really long and I appreciate all of you. I hope you stuck it through. And if not, you took a break and you can come, that you came back and watched the rest of it. I'm going to kick it back over to Jenny Beth now because she is going to briefly, briefly walk through her experience doing what we've suggested here with her local school board. So she has already done some open records requests and asked them these questions. So she's finding this information out. And when she gets answers back, that's going to help us. So she briefly goes through that experience. And, and then email us if you have any questions and share this when you are done watching it. And over to you, Jenny Beth, thanks very much.
Kelly, thank you so much for that very informative update. As you were saying, I have been reaching out to my local school board. And what I learned is that in the place where I live, the school board is a member of the Georgia School Board Association. And in turn, through their Georgia School Board Association, they are a member of the National School Board Association. And it appears, I'm not 100% positive, but it does appear that the taxpayer dollars that the school board uses to fund all of the school operations in our county pay for the funds for their dues to the National School Board Association. I'm not quite sure how much it is. It, it may or may not be a lot of money. I'm not, at this moment in time, I'm just not quite sure. I have requested an open records request to see what kind of communication my school board has had with the National School Board Association and the Georgia School Board Association in the past four months or so. And I still actually, at the time of this recording, I just got the quote for the amount that it will cost me. And I've got, I've got to pay to get, get that information. But when we get that information, it'll give us more of a sense of, it'll give me a sense of what's happening in my own county, but then it'll give Kelly and me and others within our support team, a better sense of the communication between at least one school board and a national school board association. And then we can help guide you as you guys are learning more about what your local school board does in relation to the state school board association and the national school board association. And again, the things that really stand out to me based on what Kelly was explaining today is that the National School Board Association, besides the fact that they called parents domestic terrorists, they are very focused on equity. They are very focused and partner and align with left-wing organizations and leftist organizations. I, it's difficult to tell that there's a balance between leftist ideology and center-right ideology. If, if at least there was a balance in there, you know, they're getting both sides, but it's difficult to see that there's any sort of balance with that at this, this point in time. And then the other, so that, that concerns me. And then the other thing that really I think is important to note is it's very, very important that you're taking screenshots, that you're printing out what you see online. Because you, you may find it, like, you may go start researching right after you watch, watch this film and you go start researching it and you find something, print it out right away. Print it, save it to a PDF. If you don't know how to save it to a PDF, just print it out. So at least you've got a paper copy of it. Take screenshots of what you're looking at. That way, if the website changes, you still have a copy of what, what you learned about what your school board is doing, what your state school board association is doing. And then any information that you learn about what the National School Board Association is doing, please feel free to send that to us. And that way we can research it and, not research it, that way we can take it and add it to our research so we can inform people around the entire country. Anything you see happening at the National School Board Association probably impacts all 14,000 plus school districts around the country or almost all of them. What you're finding in your state, state school board association would affect school board associ, school boards in your state. So we can start building out more, more research and more in our body of research related to this. So feel free to send us what you've got. You can send that directly to me at Jenny dot Beth at tpartypatriots.org. And again, that's J E N N Y dot B E T H at tpartypatriots.org. And then the, let me just recap the, the other things to do based on this, on, on this tutorial that you had today. Make sure that you go to schoolboardmeeting.org, schoolboardmeeting.org and download our how-to guide. Click on the how to, um, access how-to guide, enter your email address and download the how-to guide. Go to page 22 of that how-to guide and you can read the information that Kelly just went over with you. Look at page, hang on and bear with me while I just get the exact page number for you because it will be helpful if, if I can tell you that. If you take a look at page 27, you're going to see questions that you can ask your local school board members. So take a look at the top of page 27 for your questions to ask your local school board members. And then share this video. If you're watching it on Facebook, share it with, with other, other people. If you've got a parent group or a group that is working on school-related issues in your school district, share this video with them in that group, whether it's on Facebook or Telegram or Signal or wherever it may be. And then also make sure they know where to get the how-to guide so that they can start learning more about this. And it doesn't, you don't have to just share it with people who you know locally, share it all around the country. We want to make sure we get this information out so that it, it gives you the tool, the, the information you need to begin researching and gives you the tools and resources to begin researching in your own local area. So please share it far and wide. And then finally, if you have any questions at all, you can email me at Jenny dot Beth at tpartypatriots.org. And either someone on the team like Kelly or Megan or someone else on the team, or I will get back to you with, doing our best to answer your questions or taking your research and, and adding it to our body of research. So thank you very much for your time today. Thanks for being engaged and caring about these issues at the, at the local school board level. And together we are going to make a real difference in this. We'll continue to stand shoulder to shoulder, expressing our First Amendment rights and working to get to, to the bottom of what's happening in our schools to eliminate indoctrination and go back to educating our nation's children. Thank you so much.